All right, good evening. And welcome to the March 23 meeting of the Planning Commission. We are going to start with our invocation by Ms. Bailey and then our pledge of allegiance by Mr. English, so if you'll please rise.
Everyone, in light of the recent events in Brussels, I would like to take this opportunity to observe a moment of silence for the nation of Brussels and the victims and families. Lord, we give thanks for the many blessings bestowed upon us and for the opportunity given to us this evening. As we consider the business at hand, I ask that you prepare our hearts and our minds, give us insight to lead with integrity and wisdom, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good for those that have placed their trust in our leadership. Watch over the men and women that serve to protect our freedoms, in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey and Mr. English. And so we move now to our roll call, so Ms. Bailey.
Ms. Vanuch?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. English?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Appicello is running a little bit late, and I'm here, so we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. We move next to declarations of disqualifications and disclosures. Anyone have anything they need to declare or disclose? Seeing none? All right. We move now to public presentations. Public presentations, we invite the members of the public to come up and talk about any topic other than the public hearing topics, which are items number one and two on our agenda. We also encourage you, at this time during public presentations, if you wish to talk about the comp plan, to come up at that time as well. Please speak into the microphone. When you come up, state your name and address. Please refer to the light that is on the podium while you're speaking. Green indicates you may start, yellow indicates you have one minute left, and then when it hits red, we ask that you conclude your remarks. So if we could start with the people on my left-hand side, if anyone wishes to come up. Seeing none, we move to the right-hand side. Anybody wishing to come up during the public presentations?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission and members of the Comp Plan Subcommittee. My name is Philip Hornung. I live at 1012 England Drive, and I would like very much to express my appreciation for your generosity in allowing me to participate in the process of the Comp Plan work. I'm very appreciative of that. And I would like all of you, I have received a copy of a prepared remarks that I put together, and it's dated today. I sent it, I think all of you should have gotten it, an email. I'd like to have that put into a matter of record for that, just so it registers at some particular point. And once again, I appreciate the work you're doing and glad to work with you as we go along this road very much. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hornung. All right, anybody else wish to talk about either the comp plan or any item that is not in the public hearings? All right, seeing none, we will now go to the first public hearing. Mr. Harvey, I believe Mr. Zureff is handling item number one, the amendment to the zoning ordinance?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Zureff, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This item, the Planning Commission is to consider a proposed amendment to the county code regarding time limits for review of zoning reclassifications and zoning text amendments. This would be to increase the review time limit from 90 days to 100 days, as permitted by the, in the Virginia code. Apparently, if the Commission does not act within the current 90-day time period, its lack of actions is deemed approval of the requested change. So the Commission is concerned that 90 days may be too short of a time period to adequately conduct a public hearing, receive public testimony, work through all the issues that come up. And on occasion, the 90-day time limit often ends on the Tuesday prior to the Commission's regularly scheduled Wednesday meeting. So in effect, it shortens the review time period down to 77 days unless a special meeting is called. So the Commission had noted that it believes that 100 days is more, a more appropriate time limit to work through the potential issues and concerns. This has gone through the Board's Community Economic Development Committee, and on January 19, the Board approved a resolution to refer this ordinance to the Commission, and staff recommends approval of proposed ordinance 016-06.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zureff. Any questions for staff?
Mike, have you got any feedback from anybody about this?
I have not.
Nothing, so no resistance and nobody for it, nobody against it, correct?
Right.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. English. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Zureff. We'll open it up to the public hearing. Same ground rules apply. You have three minutes to make your comments to the Board. Please state your name and address, and then watch the lights. Yellow means you have a minute left, red means we ask for you to conclude. So is there anybody on my right-hand side that wishes to speak on this public hearing? Seeing none. Anyone on the left-hand side? Seeing none. We will close the public hearing and bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to recommend approval of proposed ordinance 016-06.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, by Ms. Vanuch. Mr. Rhodes, any comment?
No, sir, I just strongly support the proposed ordinance, thank you.
All right, Ms. Vanuch.
Echo those comments.
All right, any other members of the Commission? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of 016 or 016-06 approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you. And so now we move to the public hearing, item number two, and I believe, Mr. Harvey, it's?
Ms. Blackburn.
Ms. Blackburn.
Presentation for this.
All right. Ms. Blackburn, come on down.
Planning Commissioners, this is a public hearing to consider ordinance 016-18 to amend the county code, section 28-24, which is measurements regarding the method of measuring the height of a building. Recently, an issue has come to our attention that there is a difference between how the zoning ordinance requires the measurement of the height of a building and the uniform statewide building code requires how a building is measured. The zoning ordinance requires that the height be measured from the average grade to the top of the roof, which would normally be the ridge of an A-frame roof. The USBC requires that you measure it from the average grade to the midline of the roof, which is halfway between the eve and the ridge. And this requirement from the building code is universal throughout the Commonwealth, so it is not unique to Stafford. And this can actually make a difference in these houses with the steep pitch roofs as to whether or not you can build them, because with the building code, any height deviation or whatever is, just requires different building techniques to make sure the structure is safe. With the zoning ordinance, if you exceed the building height, you are in violation of the zoning ordinance, and you need to either reduce the height of the building or you need to file for variance. Well, variances cannot be applied for self-inflicted issues with the zoning ordinance. So staff is recommending that the ordinance that we have before you tonight is that instead of taking the height from the entire surround of the average grade from the entire surround of the building, we only take the average grade from the front of the building, and it will be measured from that point then to the midline of the roof. That will eliminate any issues for walkout basements or any of that type of house design. And it can make actually a difference of almost seven feet as to whether a house can be built or not. And staff recommends that you approve or recommend approval of the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please come down. Seeing no one, rise. We will close the public hearing and bring it back up to the Commission.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of proposed ordinance 016-18.
All right, well, Mr. Rhodes has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Vanuch has seconded. Mr. Rhodes, any comments?
Just that this is a logical adjustment to make sure to keep all things in compliance. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Vanuch?
Makes sense to me.
All right. Any other comments from the Commission? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of 016-18, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. That ends our public hearings. We now move on to unfinished business. I believe, Ms. Blackburn, you have this as well, the amendment to the zoning ordinance, 016-10.
Yes, Planning Commissioners, this is a continu-, is it a continuation of the public hearing? I was not here last month.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business, I'm sorry, unfinished business. Yes, this is for proposed ordinance 016-10, which is to reduce the lot area and the lot width of a detached, single-family home in a planned development two, which is also called PD-2 zoning district. And this was a text amendment proposed by Mr. Clark Lemming on behalf of Nash Stafford LLC, and this is primarily centered on the Embry Mill development. Now, last month, you had several discussions, and out of that came questions, let me get all my papers here, that you wanted staff to answer, and let's see. They are here somewhere. One of them was you wanted to compare the parking standards for neighborhood jurisdictions. I reviewed the plan, the ordinances for Stafford, Caroline, Fairfax, Hanover, Spotsylvania Counties, and they all required two spaces per dwelling unit, and I think, Ms. Bailey, you had asked about that. You also had asked about the Commissioner of Revenue reviewing the accuracy for the fiscal analysis, and he had, our Commissioner of Revenue did not dispute the analysis. And another thing you asked about was the proposed, on an average lot size instead of a minimum lot size, and there was, as far as that suggestion goes, a determination we would hope would be, needed to be made on the area of the average lot size and what it would encompass. Would it be for a block? Would it be for the section of the subdivision? Or for the entire subdivision at a whole? And would the average only be the area of the lot or both the lot width and the area? So there were several components going into that kind of a discussion and determination on how to best deal with those averaging of the lot sizes. There were several components of that, and staff does want to remind the Commission that the resolution did not provide for any changes to the proposed text of the amendment. So that could actually be handled in a different ordinance amendment, if you all would like to pursue that. You also asked about what was the smallest, single-family detached lot size allowed in our county. On reviewing the ordinance, the lot size in the UD Urban Development is 40 feet wide with 5,000 square feet in the area, and I have a caveat to that, but we'll do that a little bit later. There was also a question about the lot sizes for the single-family detached homes in Woodstream. Well, there are no single-family detached homes in Woodstream. They consist of townhouses or what is called semi-detached homes. They actually have common footers running between the houses, so they are not technically single-family homes, or detached, single-family homes. Yes, it is, yeah. When you drive down the streets, you do not have any idea that that is what it looks like on paper. And you also had concerns about the fire department with the smaller lot size, and the fire department did not have any concerns as long as the 10-foot distance remained between the homes. And you also wanted to have information concerning Lady Smith Village, and we did provide you with copies of their various lot sizes, and it appears that the smallest lot size for a conventional detached, single-family home is 42 feet wide and 100 feet deep, which would give a lot size of 4,200 square feet. Mr. Appicello is here. And staff is recommending approval of this because it does provide the diversity that is required through the comp plan with affordable housing and just allowing it to be more diverse for all of the development. And do we have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And Mr. Rhodes?
I know the staff package said that this is the only current PD2. I just want to confirm, are there any other PD2 applications in the pipeline or in the process that we're aware of?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so this is the only application for the foreseeable future that this would apply to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else? Do we want to give the applicant a chance to provide any more information? Mr. Lemming?
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Lemming is proceeding to the podium, I would like to point out to the Commission that we received a letter from him dated March 18. We sent it to the Commission via email on Monday, and we have a hard copy at your desk that includes his comparison report as well as some PowerPoint slides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. As Jeff has indicated, we did try to put together a summary of other developments which, which we're trying to imitate, at least insofar as appearances are concerned. I did want to, and there are a number of developments that we have cited with our pictures that feature, in some cases even narrower lots than what we're proposing here. But the most important point, I think, that we're trying to make with the photographs is the comparison of the varying lot widths and varying house widths, comparison of that and the uniformity between the houses, which we think enhances the overall appearance of the development. We included Woodstream. Woodstream is an interesting development because it has, it creates the appearance of single-family detached units. In reality, they are duplexes. Back in the 1990s, one of Mrs. Blackburn's predecessors came out with a zoning interpretation, basically saying that a duplex unit didn't have to be physically connected as, as most duplex units are, but could be connected simply by an underground footer. And this was used in a number of instances before some of our planned development ordinances to create the appearance of small, single-family homes. Now, we included this picture because it does show the difference in the gaps between the homes. You'll notice that two homes are closer together, and Jeff, I don't remember what the, what the distance is where those footers have to be, but it doesn't look to be any more than about 15 feet. On the other hand, there are other homes that show a fairly significant gap in between. This is the appearance that we're simply trying not to create and think that the uniformity creates a better-looking community. And just to reiterate what we went through briefly at your last meeting, generally, a family looking for a smaller home also wants a smaller yard. And somebody asked the question last time, well, can't you put 40-foot wide homes on 50-foot, or 30-foot wide homes on 50-foot wide lots? And yes, we could. But then you have the Woodstream-type appearance, and I think some of the sales attraction for the smaller home accompanied with the smaller yard is diminished. Not to say that nobody would want those, but...
Mr. Lemming, are you familiar with Wildwater Village?
Yes, uh-huh.
Is that kind of what you're going to?
Well, it's more, and that's another interesting example, and I think we talked about that briefly last time. Some of you, Mr. Boswell probably remembers, this was originally zoned as a mobile home park. It had the R4 zoning, and the county didn't want to see a mobile home park there, so they worked out, I believe, a zoning interpretation, Jeff may remember exactly, that permitted manufactured homes to come in, in the R4 zoning district. So basically, you had smaller, single-family homes instead of a mobile home park.
But the issues that I see with Wildwater Village is that I think the parking issues in there, and the streets are so narrow.
Well, we would have to comply.
Right.
You know, all of the county's ordinances as far as parking spaces, I think we addressed that last time. Parking spaces are still controlled by your ordinance, and the street width is controlled by your ordinance. So the only thing that changes here is, rather than having minimum 50-foot lots, there would be the option of a minimum 40-foot lot in a narrower house. But the street width doesn't change, the requirement for parking doesn't change, and most of these, I believe, are alley parked anyway. So, you know, we don't anticipate that, that parking would be any, any issue, given the location of the single-family detached homes within the development. How many of you actually been out to Embry Mill? You know, the streets are, what the streets are going to be. Nothing is to change about that. And whether you have a 30-foot wide home or a 40-foot wide home or a 50-foot wide home, the requirements for parking are still the same. Now, we also tried, so the purpose of the pictures is simply to give you illustrations of what this looks, looks like, and there are a number of communities with the same width that we're proposing here throughout the northern Virginia area. Staff noted the one in Caroline County, which you had asked about, which is the same developer on a 42-foot wide lot, that being the narrowest. We also tried to give you other zoning districts that permitted narrower lots, and staff is correct with regard to the UD1 district. This is your zoning ordinance that is limited to your UDAs and was developed for that purpose. Of course, the PD2 is also a planned district, as TND is. And we listed TND and RDA1 because there's a minimum lot width of 18 feet, and there's nothing under the ordinance that says that that can't be a single-family detached home. Now, I don't think that many people would want to buy a single-family detached home that was that narrow, but certainly it would permit the lot width that we're talking about here, or even a somewhat narrower lot width in those zoning districts.
Distance between homes would be difficult, too?
Distance, homes would be, yes, that could well be the case. The other zoning districts that we have found fairly consistently permit narrower lots, there are some variations, for instance, in the city of Fredericksburg, difference between corner lots and interior lots. In Fairfax, we don't have a minimum lot width at all. The, in both Loudoun County and Caroline, you have districts that permit the narrower lots. So I don't think that, that what is being requested here is unusual, and Newland, all-size community in North Carolina with these widths, they think that there's a market demand for it. There was discussion at the last meeting about the, the possibility of averaging these lots, so that there would be no less than a 5,000-square-foot average for the lots. You'd still have a minimum lot width. Now, I understand from discussions with some of you and, and with regard to the staff report, that two issues. One raised is how you measure the 5,000, the average 5,000 square foot. Our, our position would be the most helpful way to do it is with regard to the entire development, although all of the single-family detached homes, although, you know, I don't think we would be adverse to something, a smaller area than that. There is, and then there's a comment, if an average lot size is used, the, I think this means actual size of the lot can be smaller than 40 feet wide. Well, not if your ordinance doesn't permit that. So I think that's, that's the point. And then there's a procedural issue that says staff does want to remind the Commission the resolution did not provide for any changes to the proposed text amendment. I've been appearing before Planning Commissions for a lot of years, and I don't think I've ever known a Commission to feel constrained like that regardless of the issue that was put before it. Now, if you do feel constrained by that, and you think that the average 5,000-square-foot lot, or would not be less than 5,000 square foot, is workable, then I would suggest that whatever you end up doing with the actual resolution before you, you simply include that as a resolution or as a recommendation. I do think that there is some wisdom behind that, that prevents the scenario where you have an entire community of these and forces there to be variety along a given street. So that, that's our position. I don't think there's, I think the analysis that Dr. Bellis put together, Scott Mouski looked at it and agrees with the analysis. So we understand that there is a fiscal impact of this. The 5,000-square-foot average, no, less than 5,000 square feet, does address that to some extent, because it means that you're not going to get an entire neighborhood of the smaller lot widths, which we conceded at the last meeting, are going to be assessed at a lower value, which was part of the point. Part of the point is to have a more affordable home, the single-family detached home, in the Embry Mill development, and maintain the overall appearance and cohesiveness of the community, which is, which is why we, we want the same distance between the homes, the same side yard setbacks that are, that are currently maintained. In any case, that is, that is our, that is our position and the basis for our request. Anything that you wanted to add, Gary, or more?
So I think I've responded to the staff questions. I note, I note that if there are further issues, I think Mr. Rhodes at the last meeting suggested that we come back on this occasion, because you do have one more Commission meeting before you have to act on the resolution.
Mr. Lemon, I got a question for you. What's going to be the price difference? What's the range? Because you're saying that there's going to be a lower, affordable, more affordable housing in there. The average price of the house, the average price in the house in there is what? What's the average price in Embry Mill?
That's in Dr. Bellis's report.
I know, just wanted for the record.
Yeah, come on, come on up, Dr. Bellis, if you would. I'll let him give you a little more detail on that. As I recall, it was about a $30,000 difference, but, I mean, you explained the figures that you used. Now, of course, he's using figures based on, ranges based on current market.
The, this, the average price of the...
What's the average price now going in for a house in there right in Embry Mill? What's the average?
Based on lot size?
Yes, based on lot size.
Right, so for the, for the single-family homes on the 60-foot lots, the average price, $524,653.
And that's, that's a 60-foot what?
I was just going to read them, I was just going to read them all down.
He's going to go to sequence, Lee.
Okay.
He's going to go to sequence later.
The 60-foot, the next size, the 50-foot lots, the average value, $425,351. For the 40-foot lots, the average value, $370,000. For the townhouses, the average value, $335,580. And for the multifamily units, the average value, $255,000.
But the, if we, if you just look at the difference between the 50-foot lot and the 40-foot lot, I think that's primarily what he's questioning.
Yeah, it's a $55,000 differential.
So there'd be a $55,000 lower price for that?
Yes, yes, sir.
And, but they do compare to the townhouses. What's the difference between the 40-foot lot and the townhouse?
The difference is, three, the townhomes are $335, the 40-foots are $370, so that's about a $25,000 differential in price.
The townhouses are a little bit-
But just to be clear, you've got a mix of housing that's been approved at a certain number, so you've already got X number of single-family development homes and X number of townhomes, and that, those numbers aren't going to change.
The townhomes are fixed under the proffers. They can have no more than a certain number of multifamily homes.
What's the average square footage of the townhouse? Because that's three-story, right? So the average is-
For the townhouses, the average is 1,950 square-
Square feet, because it's stacked up.
Yes, sir.
It goes up.
Right.
Did we answer all of your questions?
Any, any other questions? Mr. Cohen?
I just want, I noticed in your chart on page 3 of 36, you point out that in the PT&amp;D, the minimum lot size is 18-foot, and you discuss that.
Yes.
One question I keep getting asked of me is that if you could already go down to 18, why is it that you're asking us to codify a different number if it already can be done?
Well, we're not in the, we're not in that zoning district. That's, that's the only reason, yes.
As I said, it's sort of like what Mr. English was saying, you know, we like to have it for the record. We keep, I've had numerous people sit there and say, well, but, and well, but, so, thank you.
But I think your point is well-taken. This is not PT&amp;D, this is not a UDA. It's PD2, albeit the only one, but set up with a certain set of parameters.
At the, and just to follow up on that, at the time the, that Emery Mill was zoned and became a planned development in 2001, there were two PD districts, PD1 and PD2. The others that you see listed here, the PT&amp;D, the RDA1, the UD, have all come about since that point in time. Now, I suppose hypothetically, you could say, well, go get another zoning category. Well, that's not going to happen. What we have is a community that is occurring at some point later than the zoning occurred, and we simply want the ability to have a more diverse range of units, particularly in this area of single-family detached units.
Mr. Lemon, if this approved, will you be getting more housing in there, if that's the case?
We are, as we talked some at the last meeting, we have a preliminary, our approved preliminary subdivision plan. There is also in a, in a number that we cannot exceed under the proffers.
Okay.
Now, we did not utilize that cap in the preliminary subdivision plan, but we didn't get there because of the configuration of the development, the land bays, the RPA that we had to deal with, and as I indicated at the last meeting, the developer has no, no plans to change any of that. You know, the last thing I think they, they want to consider at this particular point is coming back in for another preliminary subdivision plan, so that they can increase the density. That's not the point here.
Okay.
The point here is to, is to assist with current sales and provide more options for prospective purchasers.
Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the commission for discussion, but before I do that, I just want to clarify something with Mr. Harvey. I've been on the commission now for five years. I think, Mr. Rhodes, you've been on here twice as long.
Too long.
I don't recall a circumstance, as much as I might like to, where we went outside the boundaries set by the board of supervisors. In this case, the referral was, I would call it restrictive, and they gave us very specific language we had to deal with, and didn't give us the ability to make an alternative recommendation or change the language that they gave us. Is that sort of your train of thought?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The county code requires that the board must first refer a zoning text amendment to the planning commission, and in the referral, it usually stipulates if the commission can make changes as it deems necessary or not. In this case, it was silent, therefore, it doesn't allow for changes.
So at best, in those kind of circumstances, to indicate to the board of supervisors that we have an alternative path, at best, we would have to vote no on the specific language and make a recommendation indicating some other approach that we would prefer. Is that-
Mr. Chairman, the commission could vote either for or against the amendment, but in the recommendation to the board, stipulate whatever desired outcome the commission would like to see, as far as the specifics on the lot averaging, or things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. So what's the will of the commission?
Well, I would just share, if I might, Mr. Chairman, I would just share with the, with my fellow commissioners, the overarching position I have on this is that it is consistent with the PD2. That's the intent of the PD2, is for variety, for range, mixed use, and I think this just adds another tool in the range of options that are there. That said, in the discussion that we've had, a couple of, I think, very relevant points have been raised. One deals with the parking and frontage. I know this is rear-load, so you'll have the two cars that are in there, and therefore you've got the full frontage of this that should allow for a couple more cars. I think that opens an interesting point. I don't know that it's relevant to this particular ordinance. I think it's something to be considered about all. Do we want a minimum amount of space whenever there's a greater density in that? But I think that's further thought. I don't know that that applies targeted to one single ordinance, but it is certainly something I think we ought to consider, how it might apply and explore that to a bit. And then the other one was the, the thought on the averaging, and that is, again, an interesting one. I know it could have some complications from staff's perspective, I'm not sure how exactly it would apply. Certainly, it would help to minimize or some concern over a little bit of loss of valuation from a tax base. But I think, I think that discussion on those couple points could be whether we recommend approval or disapproval, could be points that the staff can be sure to raise to the, to the board as they go forward, and they take their further consideration on the issue. So from that perspective, my inclination is to recommend approval, but again, whether that passes or whether we recommend disapproval and it goes forward, the board's going to make the ultimate decision. And I would just encourage staff to ensure that in their presentation, they raise those couple points, because I think they're relevant considerations in the process and in the dynamic there. Mr. Chairman?
So is that a motion, Mr. Rhodes?
So if there's no other comment, I would make a motion to recommend approval of vitamin number three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the language in proposed ordinance 016-10. Any further comment, Mr. Rhodes?
No, sir. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Any further comment, Ms. Bailey?
No further comment.
Anyone else? Okay, I can't support that motion. I think more often times than not, when we signal, it's about the signal that we send to the board. So if we tell them yes, but, I think it's more likely that the board is probably going to go with the version that's sent to them. I have concerns about reducing the amount of width and size. I don't think it's necessary. I have looked at other developments. In fact, as I indicated at the last meeting, I went to Farquhar County, and I walked the property there. It's called Mint Brook. The lot sizes are averaged 6,000 to 7,000. Seems to be fairly similar to what the applicant, the developer, wants to do here. I think it's, there are other opportunities. If a developer wants to build a smaller home on a smaller footprint in Stafford County, they can use the, as was stated in the applicant's material, they can go try to do a PT&amp;D, or they can try to pursue a UDA. And in fact, this would be a great area for a UDA. I think there were some conversations with the developer some time ago, and they decided they didn't want to make this larger project into a UDA. Again, I think, I think going to a smaller lot when it's not required, and they could build a smaller house on these lots, I'm not persuaded by the Woodstream picture. Looks to me as if the distance between the houses is much more than the 10 feet required. Maybe that's part of the reason why it looks the way it does. And even if you go to any other subdivision, you'll see gaps between houses, so that in and of itself doesn't persuade me. I also don't think that many people who are buying homes are going to, going to say no because it has an extra 1,000 feet or an extra 10 feet in width. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote no. Is there any other comment? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Mr. Harvey?
Staff is not clear on how the vote finally worked out. We feel that it's an affirmative vote, but we would like to ask if you consider pulling the commission.
Okay, I'll pull the commission. Mr. Rhodes?
Yep, aye.
Ms. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Cohen?
Nay.
Ms. Vanooch?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. English?
No.
Myself, no. So four-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the comp plan amendment. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Cohen, who chaired the subcommittee, to chair this section of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Appicella. Your desk, and you received in the mail, via your email, the agenda for this part of the meeting. Basically, the subcommittee had finished its work. We proposed numerous elements. We sent, came up to this body with them. Then this body went to the supervisors for their input on those elements. Two weeks ago, we talked about the, what the supervisors came back with. So we're at a point where staff is ready to start working on the actual language of the comp plan revisions and amendments. And so what we need to do is, tonight, give them some definitive action points from which to go forward, so that Mr. Zurev knows what he's going to be writing. With that in mind, you received, the first thing that we have is a timeline, and we wanted to make sure that you understood where we stood as far as the timeline of getting things accomplished. Part of what, and Ms. McLennan can let me know if I'm misspeaking, but the feeling was that when we actually go to a public hearing, we needed to have the actual wording and the language of the comp plan for that, rather than just tonight saying, we like X, and then scheduling a comp plan, public hearing.
Mr. Cohen, actually, I would suggest that the commission have the wording available once the advertisement hits the paper, and it needs to be available for public inspection.
Right. Thank you. So we, tonight, it's sort of the idea, we give staff the guidelines of what they need to do, then Mr. Zurev will do his work, he will then write things up and bring it back to us, so that we can have the official language for the advertisement, as Ms. McLennan said. So first item on our agenda is to look at the timeline alternatives, just so that you understand what we're looking at as far as trying to get things moving forward. Remember, we are tasked to give it to the board supervisors by the end of June, and so I'll turn this part over to Mr. Zurev, so he can sort of walk you through. On your table this evening, you had a more linear version of the timeline than what we had initially, to try to help you visualize it. So, Mr. Zurev?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Cohen. If I could have the computer, please, the timeline is, put it on the screen so people can see. So here we are tonight on March 23rd, reviewing some of the amendment issues, and, you know, we know that the, what you have tonight is, is not ready for primetime yet. There are concepts, and we still have work to do with writing detailed texts and mapping. So we believe that, you know, you need to defer the issue to either the next meeting or April 27th. Do you think we, staff will need until April 27th to have a complete document ready for advertising a public hearing? So if there are any issues where we maybe need to discuss at the next meeting on April 13th, we can definitely do that. But plan on, at this point, assuming everything goes smoothly, we would have amendments by April 27th. So the idea there would be for initiation of a public hearing, that would be on May 25th. And with a May 25th public hearing, the commission could vote that night, or they could have two additional meetings, June 8th or June 22nd, for additional consideration. Now, if, if things are not ready to be initiated on April 27th, then on May 11th, if you initiate the public hearing then, you would have a June 8th public hearing with an additional meeting to make a decision, or the final chance would be May 25th to initiate a hearing with June 22nd being that date. And this is following your regular meeting schedule. You could always schedule a special meeting if we get to that point, if it's necessary. And I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. And then I'll just let the commission know that at the June 8th meeting, two members of the commission so far have indicated that they have out-of-state commitments at that meeting, and so, just so that you're aware of all parameters as we go forward. Again, this doesn't preclude people from asking staff for more time or more information, but we wanted to let you know what the impacts of that would be. So with that said, we move to this, the, number two on the agenda, which is the growth projections. It seems to be a good place to start, since a lot of the plan sort of tumbles from that. Items from this, by the way, were, are basically approved by the subcommittee, and while there were three voting members of the subcommittee, other members of the planning commission served on the subcommittee, and we made many of our decisions, I think all of them, honestly, by consensus, by consensus. I don't think we actually ever voted on anything, because everybody came to consensus on issues. That doesn't mean that they can't be changed, but that just lets you know where things came from. So the first item of depth that we're looking at is the residential projections for growth. The normal number that the county has used has been from FAMPO, and Mr. Zurev has prepared in Attachment 1. That information with the estimates, when we went forward to the supervisors and at their work sessions, they indicated a desire to see if there were other options of growth estimates that might be a little bit lower. And so when we met last time, we sort of tasked staff to look into this, and so Mr. Zurev created and interpreted, looked at information to try to come up with another method, and so I'll turn it over to Mr. Zurev to explain the Zurev method.
Okay. Uh-oh. Yeah, if you can go to the computer, please. We have the comparison information available. The FAMPO information is across the top that we've been using, as we've been considering the latest amendments. With the population projections from FAMPO, that would result in a dwelling unit increase of 33,620 future units over the next 20 years. So, yeah, one of the previous committee meetings, staff was asked to kind of evaluate a potential population projection based on the information we know. So what, what we've done is, is worked on a projection based on the latest growth trends that we've experienced with occupancy permits in the county, and also compared that, looked at the past 20 years of growth as well, to try to follow the same trends that have happened over the last 20 years. And I'm just going to advance for a moment. So here's kind of the, the evaluation that, that we worked on year by year. The red, red line kind of shows the, the approximate trend from 1996 to 2016, and you can see the peaks and valleys of the, of the boom and bust time in residential growth. So we kind of followed that as a model, but as we moved forward, the next 20 years, we didn't necessarily want to project out such an extreme boom or extreme decline in the amount of residential growth. So we followed the same kind of peak and valley in the trends, but didn't go to quite the extremes that we experienced over the last 20 years. And, and this, again, this population projection is, is, is based solely on residential dwelling unit growth, so it doesn't necessarily take into account in, in and out migration, or birth and death rates, those types of factors, or- death rates, those types of factors, or maybe other economic factors that might come into play. It assumes that information kind of goes constant, as we've experienced, yes.
You get some of your information from the commission on revenues? Is that where you get some of your information, too?
Well, a lot of this is, is just our past-
Permits?
Permit trends and occupancy permit trends.
So you, can you go back to the next slide or something?
Yes, yeah.
So you're about 10,000 less than FAMPO, right?
Well, the, for the dwelling units, it ends up down to 20,840 compared to 33,620 as a total amount of population growth. And so when you look at that, the bottom chart then looks at the distribution of dwelling units over the different areas in our future plan. The targeted growth areas would drop from 16,810 down to 10,420. Suburban areas would go down from 10,000 to 6,000, and ag, also 6,700 down to 4,100. So that was the, would be the reduction that would be resulted from the, this other alternative projection that we've come up with.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zurev. Any other questions for Mr. Zurev? Okay.
And I guess to let the commission, you know, the question we have is, with this information, is, does the committee want to do anything with this? Or shall we proceed with the FAMPO projections, or not?
Do you need a motion or something? I would like-
Yeah, that's my, what I envision is sort of take motions.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we accept Mr. Zurev's numbers instead of FAMPO. That's, I think he looks like he's more in line. I mean, he's got the pulse of what's going on, so that's my motion.
All right, is there a second for using the Zurev method?
I'll second for the Zurev method.
All right.
As long as we trademark that right now.
Yeah, I think so. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on using the Planning Department's methodology?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rhodes?
I'm concerned about the use of the projection. I appreciate the work of staff, and they were tasked to try and find some other alternatives. And certainly, the desire and intent and motivation of the alternatives were to find ones that are at lower growth. And I think it's, you know, he approached it, and he tried to come up with a model, and that's fair. But I think if we just look over history, we've never seen anything like what even the FAMPO projections are showing, let alone what we've got represented here. And just because we want it to be lower, doesn't mean it'll be lower. And it certainly makes life a lot easier when you look at the distribution that goes into the TGA, what we would have to fit into there. But that doesn't mean it's necessarily what we'll experience. Again, if you go back since 1965, every 20-year period, we've had anywhere between 104% growth to 150% growth in a 20-year period. Doesn't mean that's going to keep up, but that's what it's been. Every 20-year period you pick out there, you've got that type of growth. We've had the lowest average growth of any time to the mid '0200s. There's never been a period of that. You can go out from 1965 to 2015, and you look at every five-year period they've got in there, the only ones that have ever been single-digit have been in that eight, nine, 10 timeframe. So we had a unique, we all experienced it, so we know it was there. And so we've never kind of had that experience. The rest of the time, it's been that size of growth. Now, I say that to say that 100, 150, and I'm not saying it's necessarily going to continue. But when you look at the FAMPO projection, the FAMPO projection only represents over 20 years, a 65% growth. Historically low growth that they're projecting in the FAMPO projection. And so to take another model that even drives below that, I believe, is overly conservative and concerning to me from a planning perspective. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other comments?
But would, Mr. Rhodes, don't you think you consider that if he's in a planning office and he sees these permits coming in, that they kind of got a pulse of what's going on with the county, other than what FAMPO is? That's where I'm going to go with it, because I think they know, they see a trend and they know a trend. I think by going with his numbers, I think it's safe to do that.
I think if you went back to the next trots, the world is a cyclical place. If you went back to the next trots, you'd find some different things that would round it out differently, probably. And I don't disagree that there's some math behind there, but we've always gone with the set of figures. They've always been the ones we have planned off of. Right now, they are projecting, while they're not satisfying to the board of supervisors, because there's still growth.
Right.
The fact is, they're projecting historically dramatically lower growth over 20-year period than we've ever seen. And so then to find another model that actually takes us down by another third from that worries the heck out of me, in a planning perspective.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Yes, Mr. Cohen, I would agree with Mr. Rhodes. Certainly looking at a more conservative figure, based on, to me, it looks like from the Planning Department is more historical data. When we look at FAMPO, possibly, they're looking at other areas or things that will affect growth in the entire region, and the impact that it'll have on the different counties that are surrounding it. So I'd rather be more prepared, especially when it comes to our infrastructure, transportation, schools, than to be not prepared. So that's how I see that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any other comment? All right. My only comment would be that is that we have the good fortune of updating the plan periodically, and so that if we go with the Planning Department's numbers, and at the next juncture, it seems as though they are too low, we can certainly adjust to it. And if we are going on the premise that we seem to have been going through, that we will have phasing, that gives us ample opportunities to sort of make that type of adjustment. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, and that is to accept the Planning Department's numbers. All in favor, say aye.
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 All against?
Nay.
Okay, I think that's almost a three, so, nays one, so do we have a motion to go with the FAMPO number?
I'm sorry, I think we need to poll.
Okay, all right. Mr. Rhodes?
Turn our microphones on.
Yeah, really, that would help.
We're going to have to start using the button now.
Okay, so this is the motion to accept the staff's planning numbers. Mr. Rhodes says nay.
Nay.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Bailey says nay. Mr. Appicella?
Yay.
Mr. Appicella says yea. Mr. English?
Yay.
English says yea. Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Boswell says nay. Ms. Vanuch?
Yea.
Ms. Vanuch says yea. And I say yea, so that makes it four to three, to use the Planning Department's numbers. Okay? Thank you. That gives Mr. Zurev guidance to use numbers for the rest of the plan. We now move to item three, which is the urban service areas. If people remember, the, there was some, when we had our public input sessions, we had some input by the public into this. When this was, this issue was taken to the board of supervisors for their work session, they made two suggestions that were separate, and then they supported one of the suggestions that had come, that had been germinated from the public input sessions. And so, Mr. Zurev, if you'd like to summarize or detail the three?
Sure. Go to the computer again, please. Just have the screenshots of the three areas that would be proposed for changes. And the subcommittee has seen these, and this is how the map would be changed. The first area, this is along the Ramuth Church Road corridor, on the south side of Courthouse Road. The area is, the map on the top is the current future land use map. It kind of highlights the area with the black line, dotted line. And then the area, the map on the bottom, shows the, that area getting added in to the urban service area with a suburban land use designation. And we also talked about adding in a commercial node at the intersection where Ramuth Church and Winding Creek are planned to be reconstructed to tie in directly with each other. So that would be a crossroads where maybe, may be some opportunity for some commercial development in the future. You want me to run through each of them?
Any questions on that one, while it's up? Seeing none, yes, sir, go on to the next.
Okay. And the next area is southern part of the county, along Holly Corner Road, just to the, to the west of Stafford Lakes Village. There's a street in Stafford Lakes Village that tees into this, the one property, the one larger property in this area. And so this highlighted area is planned to be included into the urban service area, also as suburban land use, under the suburban land use designation.
All right, any questions for Mr. Zurev? Seeing none, we move to number three.
And the last change area is recommended along King's Highway, to the, on the north side of the King's Highway, and east side of Forest Lane Road. So this is area that includes the Sherwood Farm site and former Virginia Renaissance Fair site. And this area is recommended to be removed from the urban service area. The current designation of business and industry would be changed to agricultural, rural agriculture. And so that's the change.
All right, thank you. I'm bringing it back to the committee. Is there a motion pertaining to the USA changes?
I recommend we accept all the changes as proposed.
All right, Mr. Rhodes has made a motion to accept all of them as proposed. Is there a second?
I'll second. He beat me to it.
Okay, Ms. Vanuch has seconded. Any comments from?
I would just share that those have been a couple quirky spots for a long time, and it only makes sense.
Okay, Ms. Vanuch?
I think the same thing.
Okay, any other members? All right, seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of accepting the changes to the USA, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes unanimously. So we now move to the Airport Overlay District. And if, we all remember, last year, there was a subcommittee with Mr. Appicella and Mr. English, who did diligent work to try to draft a plan. Staff did a massive amount of work as well, I think it's fair to say, on a, the overlay district. What we recommended initially to the supervisors was that it would be a standalone component to the comp plan. They did not seem to be in favor of that suggestion. They were more inclined of working it into the comp plan itself. We looked at this as a subcommittee. The subcommittee agreed with the idea of working it into the comp plan in total, rather than having it as a standalone, which then becomes a question of, you know, is that the will of this committee to use, the commission to make it, work it into the full plan? We received some input today from the Airport Commission on it. So basically, the question before us is, do we put it in, keep with the idea of a standalone? Do we put it in, just work it into the existing comp plan? And do we make any changes to what the subcommittee and this full commission approved before? And I'm not sure if you feel you need to add any, or?
Yeah, just to mention that a few subcommittee meetings ago, we, I talked to the subcommittee about the concept of how this can be integrated in. We would, what we were proposing was, under the land use section, Chapter 3, we would highlight, just in general, the airport compatibility issues as it relates to land use. And then, underneath the land use recommendations, map out the subareas that correspond with the, with the zone, different zones that were established, and identify what uses, uses that might otherwise be allowed, that might not be permitted, because it's within the proximity of the airport. And so that's something that we would, we're still working on, adding that in, and we'll work that language into the document. Then the previous airport compatibility plan, that would be an appendix to the overall comprehensive plan in its entirety. So it's there for reference, if people want to refer to it.
All right, okay. Any feeling by the commission, or motions?
I make a motion to accept the Airport Overlay embedded into it.
As an embedded element, all right. Is there a second to accepting?
It's a long, big document.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Vanuch, seconds. Any discussion?
Just, just for clarification, so is this all narrative of that plan is now going to become a component of the comp plan?
Working in.
Because, I mean, there is a, there's a lot of points in that narrative. And while I agree with a lot of concepts in it, the scope and scale of the narrative was rather vast and concerning, so how would we address that?
I think, Mr. Zurev, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when you sort of talked to us about this before, the elements would be written in, and then a large portion would be an appendix.
Yeah, that more detailed document would be just an appendix for reference, and then, but within Chapter 3, the real, the focus is going to be what land uses are, had we identified that might need additional review and additional consideration, should a site be considered for rezoning.
So I just wanted to confirm that when we're making the motion, are we making the motion for both aspects? That all the narrative of what was handed to us would all be an appendage as part of the comp plan?
Right.
Yes.
Right.
That's, are you envisioning, Mr.?
Yes.
Yes, right. And that's what I think we've been discussing all along, but it's great to have the clarity. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of embedding the Airport Overlay into the comp plan with an appendix to include the other elements of it? All say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Sorry.
Okay.
I was fencing it there for a moment. Sorry, I couldn't get it out. I was trying to think of what I wanted.
Okay. All right. So now, also on line four of the agenda, Mr. Zurev has called it the central Stafford Planning Area. To some of the rest of us, it's more familiar with the business district that Mr. Hornung has brought forward. And it's sort of in the same situation whereby the subcommittee looked at it, we, Mr. Harvey and Mr. Zurev, I think it was actually just Mr. Harvey, brought it to the supervisors at their work session. They were supportive of it, but felt that it should be truncated from the initial proposal. The subcommittee looked at it, made some boundaries to the north, south, and east. Mr. Appicella raised an issue about the flight plan to the west, so that we were going to look at and ask staff to look into that element of it. And so we're sort of looking at putting that into the comp plan. And I believe, and correct me, Mr. Zurev, if I'm wrong, it's the same mentality of working it in, embedding it into it, rather than having it specifically as a standalone element. So that'd be our conceptual argument for many of this, is that we do it as a work along.
It's embedded into an element of Chapter 3, similar to other planning areas.
All right, okay. Did you want to say anything about that, Mr. Zurev? I know Mr. Hornung sent us some information today, or yesterday, so I don't know if anybody, anybody on the commission has any questions for Mr. Zurev, or?
I'll just add, yeah, so I know the discussion at the last meeting was about, you know, adding and highlighting area to the west of the airport and the growth area. And if, go to the computer, please. We've highlighted the, the planning area, and you have, the two boxes represent the kind of inner and outer flight pattern areas around the airport. And the orange shaded area to the left, or west of the red line, would be the extra area that would be highlighted as part of this planning area. And, you know, it doesn't exactly follow the boxes, and the intent here is to, we wanted to try to follow some known geographical boundaries, so we follow Abel Reservoir, and then Kellogg Mill Road as kind of breakpoints for that subarea. And then we included some language that we would add in to identify that, you know, these are, these are primary rural residential areas, so, you know, you have a lot of rural residential uses. And, you know, this doesn't prohibit the continuation of those residential uses, but, you know, the, it highlights that, you know, maybe residential is not always going to necessarily be the most compatible use. And maybe at some point in the future, commercial use, if developed appropriately, might be compatible. So that, that language is added in, would be added in to the overall kind of discussion of this central Stafford Planning Area. Some of the comments that we received, from Mr. Hornung in particular, referred to wanting to see the, the kind of larger mapping of those, those flight patterns, the, with the full buffer area around those, so we can easily, in this image, we just dropped that layer on today, and we can add the mapping with that, you know, to show the full traffic patterns around, around the airport, as a, as a separate inset, so.
Thank you, Mr. Appicella, since, okay. All right, any other members have any comment? Is there any motion?
What are the, the TGA, each TGA's growth numbers? Can we add that as a total?
That would be an element of this area that we can, we're going to talk about that too. There would be, and I can highlight where those would be within this district. Me. The areas where that was kind, was suggested was in the northeast corner in this location and then down in the southwest corner where there are already development rights existing on this property. So there were two areas and the, the idea was to, to be able to accommodate all the projected amount of growth that we, we ended up kind of working our way into this, this district. And we felt kind of in locations that were not too far from what we have in the courthouse area or down in the southern part near, near the kind of community facilities that are down in England Run, for example.
So we should just probably use your growth numbers that you have then?
Well, there could be some modification. Maybe when we get to that issue, we can consider whether, whether the, if there are reductions, should they be from this area or from other, other areas? Yeah, because the overall idea of the central Stafford, you know, we, the, the majority of this area, the remainder of the area is going to be recommended for, you know, business-related uses, industrial uses. And we're working on draft language to, to kind of capture a lot of that in line with the central Stafford plan that was presented. So a lot of that, with the exception of these two areas where residential might go, is the, the main intent of the area is for business.
Right.
So.
Mr. Chairman? Just, just for clarity, the, the areas you circled were what?
They're planned for, where, areas where residential
Residential.
Could be supported through this draft.
Okay. There, there, they're going to be the only two areas, correct?
Yes.
Right at this point?
All right. So do we have any motion about creating the central business district or central Stafford planning area or whatever we want to name it? Either yes, we put it in or a motion not, that we don't put it in?
Or would the commission want to wait and see
Wait on that.
Come back in two weeks?
Till we bring it to you?
Yeah, I, I would prefer you do that.
Okay. Okay. So, and, and for staff's perspective, anything in particular you would like them to look at over the next, before the next meeting, so they know what to sort of get a feel for?
Yeah, we're good. Well, I'll be good. You know, I have a good idea of what we're, what we'll provide. And we'll get more input as we talk about the TGAs and make adjustments there too.
All right. So we move next to the TGAs. And that would be attachment three, I believe?
Three.
And I'll just give it to Mr. Zeriff to sort of explain. The, the attachment number three that you gave to us is based on the FAMPO numbers, if memory serves?
Yes.
Okay. So that, you know, our decision earlier to use your projections would necessitate altering those to some degree.
About third.
All right. So, yeah, if you go to the computer again, this first slide provides a comparison table with the amount of growth projected under the current urban development areas. The, that's the top chart. And then the, the bottom chart would be under the proposed targeted growth areas. And we have new, new boundaries and new, new districts. So they, they generally correspond with the areas that, that were already in place. But for example, the courthouse area takes in the northern part of the George Washington Village UDA. And so that is much larger and the center port area would kind of fall into the central Stafford planning area and, but we'll, we'll go through the details. And the, the big change and the big thing that I've ended up having to do with these proposed targeted growth areas was, you'll see the amount of multifamily was, was a lot more to be able to get that to fit within the, the, these locations. You have 3,000, over 3,000 more units, multifamily units from what was previously recommended. So that we could be just, just talking about and evaluating what, what we have and what we've, what we've proposed, you know, for the commission to consider if the amount of multifamily, if that's much more than might be realistic. And so maybe that's a spot where we would do some reducing in a, you know, as, as one consideration. Looking at each area individually, here's the courthouse targeted growth area. And since it's such a large area, we've broken it out into three sub areas. The east sub area is to the east side of Interstate 95. We call it the east or downtown area, which is the Stafford redevelopment, includes a lot of the Stafford redevelopment area around the courthouse. And then the, to the west, you have the northwest sub area with Embry Mill and southwest area. And so we have unit breakouts for, for those sub areas that are proposed. So that's for, you know, the commission to consider whether they're okay with these, these sub areas and the, the breakout that's provided. And if you're okay with the sub areas, are the amounts of, number of units okay as well? Or should we make some, some reductions?
And, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zeriff, a couple of quick questions just to clarify, make sure I understand context. These are, just for clarity, these are units in addition to those already planned, right?
This would be, actually, no, it would include, for example, it would account for some units that are already approved, you know, so like units in Embry Mill that are not built, that can be included as the future units, as part of the future unit.
Okay. So some of these are approved but not built units that are already on our plans?
Yeah, like Aberley in the east, that, you know, that
Yeah, and that, that's what I was trying to
That can fall.
Trying to get it in my head here. Okay, so, so Aberley would be part of these.
Yes.
How many multifamily do we have in the county right now? Does anybody know? Roughly?
Check.
I was just trying to get context on that one too.
Five thousand, thousand maybe? That may be high, but five thousand for some reason.
So what, what this is projecting is double what we already have in the county or two times more than new than what we already have in the county? Because it's like 9,000 units?
Right. And that five, don't quote me on the five thousand.
No, 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 no. I was just trying to get order of magnitude.
That's a little high.
Four or five thousand. Probably around 10% of our
All right.
Stock, which is right now around 44,000 rooms.
Thank you. And that's what I, I kind of thought, so I was just making sure I was not off base on that thought when I was putting it in context. And then the last quick question is, just so I keep my scale, the, the, the box around the airport on the, that we were last discussing is south of the body of water here, correct? It's outside the scale.
It, it encroaches a little bit into the southwest area.
It does actually hit into that?
Yes.
Okay. So it would affect some, some of that non-housing would affect that area? Okay. Thank you.
Right. Our discussion back when, there was something before us, that flight area on the bottom.
Yeah, I was trying to remember where that
Yeah, where it went. And then, Mr. Zeriff, these numbers would necessaratively change based on using the planning department numbers?
Correct.
Okay.
We would go back and, and ramp the numbers down. If there's no specific direction, we'd probably kind of take first, probably look at multifamily, get some of that down and then, and then make some equal breaks or reductions elsewhere.
Okay. Go ahead. Anybody else have any question on the first, the courthouse one? All right.
Oh, and this is just a conceptual map we, we threw together that we may, we discussed this at the subcommittee meetings that, to provide a little, a little bit more, more specificity as to what might be recommended in these areas to, as a general concept of where commercial, mixed use and residential might be sort of supported in these, in these sub areas. So that's a concept that, that, you know, this is how it may, may appear as we move So this is the central Stafford planning area and we have the two port, two areas of residential I discussed, the southwest section near the Center Port interchange. That is a, a property that has 600 units by right, allowed by right. And then the northeast corner, we've added in 900 units, a mix of, of 900 units.
Can you circle that on there?
Yeah.
That's what we were talking about.
Right. Yeah.
So that's by right, you said, right in there?
Well, that would be a new, you know, people would have to come in. And now part of that area includes where the Old Dominion Village request, application was proposed and that, that's going to be coming back to the planning commission. So that's within that area. So, so we have these two sub areas, the remainder of the, of this district would be business and industry types of uses. And also if the commission wants to consider if the name is appropriate, central Stafford planning area, would, or would there be a desire to have an emphasis on the, this being a business district too?
Central business Stafford?
Central Stafford business area or?
Is it, is that okay, Mike? Maybe central business area?
Central Stafford business area.
Central Stafford business area.
Sure.
I guess, yeah. So. All right. Any other questions on this one? Seeing none, we can move to West Clayborne.
Okay. So this area was the lower part of formerly what was known as the Center Port UDA. And then it, it expanded, I think it previously was, was generally along this location. So this has expanded down to Trussler Road. And this was, would be more of a primarily residential area, south of the Center Port interchange. Most of it outside of the airport overlay. And so you could have a mix of, of residential units in this area, not far from England Run as well and the other library and schools in, in this location. And this is another area we'd likely ramp down the number of multifamily units in this district, but still have a mix.
Okay. Any questions? I, I just have a quick question. Mr. Zeriff, I noticed on this one, there's no delineation between north, south, east, west and where some we do. Is it possible to have, have it that all of them are, such as this one, where it's just a generalized, without anything specific, designated for any particular area? Or is it desirable to do the other way?
We, we had that with, with some of them that were larger. We didn't have it on this one just because it was smaller than, than these others. But yeah, we can definitely do it any way. We can, you know, we can keep it, keep it open. We're just have a total for number of units for the entire district for all of them, if that's, if that's a desire.
Do you need the, I, I would just wonder if you need the Stafford central business descriptors to stay outside the airport overlay element? So you need some way to describe that because that, the rest of that's remaining mainly commercial. And so you really are targeting the home areas.
Yeah, if there's a special consideration for location, then yeah.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, some of the targeted growth areas will, will have a different complexion. Some of them may only have one type of use, like the central Stafford area would be mainly business, same with Boswell's Corner. This area may be mainly residential, so it may not have any other designations.
Okay. Is there a feeling by anybody on the commission, whether one way or the other, about subdividing it or keeping it whole? As like this one versus the subdivisions elsewhere?
I just say keep it whole like it is.
Okay. Is, any disagreement with Mr. English's idea of just keeping them whole? Okay.
Not, not a disagreement. I think we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. It'll be useful one way or another.
Really?
You said all those homes had to be in this area or it'll be, well, you have all these homes available, you can put them anywhere.
Right. All right. So if it, it seems as though everybody's okay with just keeping broad without having the sub.
For all of the TGAs.
For all of them. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Zeriff. Thank you, Mr. English. All right. Okay, so now we move on to Warranton Road planning area.
Okay. All right, if we can go to the computer again for this next, this has the four different quadrants or districts around Warranton Road and Interstate 95. This is the expanded, this used to be the Southern Gateway UDA and we've expanded the area to the east along 17. And so this, this is a much larger area, can accommodate more units. We likely will ramp down the number of units though in this area as well. And take away the sub areas.
And, and just for, for clarification, this, this zone includes the area east of 95 that, two areas that the supervisor sort of indicated to us that they wanted included in the TGA, correct?
Yes.
And then I, if, just for everyone's sake, it went down farther along Warranton Road solely for the standpoint that along Warranton Road, many of those parcels are already business already, so that
Does that take it up past Walmart? Is it taking it?
Up, up the other direction?
Yeah.
Only out to Salisbury, Virginia. Just past International Parkway.
Yes. Okay. So I don't think we, it, it expanded to the west, did it?
Not, slightly. It, it expanded a little bit just to account for the redevelopment area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Because that was one of the things that the, that we had raised many, a long time ago of sort of combining the redevelopment areas with the other things so that wasn't so many different colors on the map.
And it did incorporate, it did extend to the southwest to include the properties along Salisbury, Virginia Parkway in this location.
All right. Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right. Thank you, Mr. Zeriff.
And the last two, this is the Leland Station targeted growth area, which is the same limits as the prior urban development area. The amount of growth is less than what was recommended in the urban development area because you have a lot of by right development happening to the south side of the CSX rail line and then some potential area for, for new development to the north towards Morton Road. So.
All right. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we go to Brook Station.
And this is the last one of the targeted growth areas. The lowest amount, just 270 single family residential units in this area. Originally, it was recommended for multifamily and townhomes and so those were removed under this latest iteration. And there was, there had been discussion of possibly removing, but there was still desire from the board to keep this in as a targeted growth area for way out future phase potential development in, in the outlying years.
All right. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we go to Brook Station.
And this is the last one of the targeted growth areas. The lowest amount, just 270 single family residential units in this area. Originally, it was recommended for multifamily and townhomes and so those were removed under this latest iteration. And there was, there had been discussion of possibly removing, but there was still desire from the board to keep this in as a targeted growth area for way out future phase potential development in, in the outlying years.
All right. Any questions, comments? So on this one, other than we deciding to use whole zones rather than having subsections, what we'll need is the new updated numbers using the, the planning department methodology. So we really wouldn't, I wouldn't think it would be wise to sort of vote on anything or now on this until we see the new numbers. Is that a fair assessment from everyone? All right. So that will
Ms. Chairman, though, one comment I would just share for consideration, as we work through the eaches and, and developing a plan and a logic and it all, it, I know everybody works real hard at that, sometimes when you aggregate it, it shows a different picture than you thought it was going to show. And when you look at the aggregate on this, we've got, of all our 20-year growth, we've only got 20, 24% of that plan to be single family home. We've got 76% of it planned for townhome and multifamily. And that has never been the complexion of this county and I And I, I just don't know how well that'll be received. Last time we had a plan up there, we were well under 50% of multifamily. And that was received very negatively as perceived as being inaccurate. So as you aggregate this, suddenly it's like, ooh, wait a second. So I, I just highlight that out.
Right. And, and I think Mr. Zerf sort of hinted at, when we look at using the, the planning numbers, newer version, they would hit the, the multifamily first. And which is exactly what you're, you're hitting at. So we're all on the same page on that one. All right?
Mr. Chairman, I think we would try to shoot for the goal of trying to replicate our current mix of housing within the county as best we can. We may not be able to do that, but that'd be our goal.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. All right?
And also this, but this is in more intensely developed, yeah, concept is a more intensely developed area. So the mixes may trend, trend more towards the higher density, but it's not gonna...
And the open urban growth will be all the single-family homes. So I, I don't doubt it. It just, this is skewing off further than we've looked at before. Wanted to raise it.
No, thank you, sir. I think this is a valid point. All right. So now we move to the next element, which is the Planning Area Concept slash consolidation of, consolidation of zones. Mr. Zerf?
So, yeah, this, we've, we've discussed this concept. And for this issue, I just have the, the overall future land use map. And this Planning Area Concept would include the six targeted growth areas that we've, we've gone over. But then also include other areas in the county that have some sort of special kind of considerations for their location. A lot of them, the others are more maybe economic development focused, including Boswell's Corner and Quiet Town Center, to name a few. And so we'd highlight those just as we highlight the targeted growth areas. And then we have a side table in the corner, though, that would identify whether the planning area is a targeted growth area for residential or a kind of an economic development priority focus area. And each area will get some kind of discussion within Chapter Three to explain why it's identified as a special planning area. Some of the other areas we've discussed was the Marina District along a Quiet Creek, where we have a consolidation of several marinas. That's, was identified in the economic development planning, economic development plan as a, as an area they wanted to, to provide a little focus for some development potential. And another addition we made since the last Subcommittee meeting, we've, just like we've highlighted other recreation areas along the Rapid River, we added in highlighting the Wide Water Peninsula for the Wide Water State Park as a reflect the planning that's occurring on that, in that location. So we, we can, you know, it's right now, this makes it a very generalized map, but we, in the, in the inset, in the discussion in Chapter Three, can provide more, more description as to what kind of land uses are recommended in each area.
All right. Thank you. Any comment? Everyone's all right with this? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zerf. So now we move to Development Phasing, which would be Attachment Six.
This is a potential phasing plan that we, we, when this was, was considered last year, we, we proposed a phasing plan. And, and this, this phasing plan was taken forward to the, the Board also at their retreat. And they, they seem to be in favor of, of establishing this type of phasing plan. And, and so we've, we've modified the phasing plan to kind of correspond with the latest targeted growth areas that we've been working on. So you identify, we, we identify in areas phasing that is based on undeveloped areas and versus redevelopment. For example, in the Courthouse, areas that already have some development that are in place, but areas also that are, that are raw land that can be developed. We, we've split up the Courthouse that way. The Central Stafford area, we've, we've divided that phasing up by location, because much of the land is, is already, is, is raw land that... So the, so the phasing divide there is more of an issue of getting utilities to, to areas specifically the north of Ramaham Church Road versus south of Ramaham Church, Ramaham Church Road. West Clayborne Run, that's a midterm proposal, not a lot of development there currently. Warranton Road, similar to Courthouse, where we break up the phasing by undeveloped areas versus redevelopment. The redevelopment areas are out in the outlying years, because that's often just going to take longer to assemble property for redevelopment and also for existing uses to maybe get to that point where they're ready for redevelopment. And Leland Station is more of a location phase. And Brook Station is identified as a long-term phase. This was discussed at the, one of the previous Subcommittee meetings, too.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask a, it's a different but related question. I, on, on our first TGA submission of the concept, we also talked about redevelopment area for the 610 corridor, which is not part of the TGAs, but we introduced that as a concept. And, and I just never thought to look at it, and I apologize. In any of the modified language, do we address that as a redevelopment emphasis area?
We don't.
Okay. Because we did have it in our earlier proposal, and now we've gotten really folks some TGAs, and I, I just forgot to even think about it for a while, how we do infill and redevelopment in places that were already built out.
We can definitely add that in in the, because those are within, you know, that area's within suburban land use. We can add some discussion.
It wouldn't be inconsistent with our past submissions.
Right.
It just hit me, seeing the redevelopment here.
And there is, there was some discussion about suburban area and, and how that, you know, discussion evolved with the Board in their retreat. We talked about infill properties and whether they should all be single-family detached or not. And the recommendation was that they could change unit types, provided they kept the density the same. And they were, the new use was compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It did get to that to some degree.
So we, we could now add that in where it needs to be using that language? And since they, they gave us that, it's acceptable? Right, Mr. Harvey?
Yes, Stafford contemplated putting that in. And I don't know if Mike's going to get that later on or not.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Thank you, Mr. Zerf. All right. Any other questions on the phasing? All right. And so now we move to the next part, which is a smaller lot size element.
And that was, let's see. Yeah, this was a discussion during the Subcommittee that we include smaller lot sizes for single-family detached in, you know, as a means to, means to meet some of the density requirements and projected amount of growth. So we've included some new language. You have that in your, in your staff report that we would add to the, to the Targeted Growth Area section. We would note that the single-family, you know, variety of single-family units are, are supported. And to achieve higher density, smaller lot sizes and typically found it are encouraged, particularly when located in mixed-use areas in close proximity to multimodal transportation. So that would be additional language within the Targeted Growth Area discussion in text. And then we would add to the suburban land use that lot sizes less than a quarter acre in size may be supported if located adjacent to higher-density residential or commercial development. So there's two, two parts to that.
All right. And I guess the, the question before us is, and we, we sort of had a vote earlier this evening on the, the concept thereof. Is there a feeling that this, the idea of looking at smaller lot sizes in the TGAs is something that is worth putting into the plan as an element or not? And so I'll, I'll throw it out to the Commission and see what they think.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, if mine, but that, these would all just be dependent upon what zoning area they're in, right? So it still goes back to the underlying zoning? Or like the PD2 or the UDA and other?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rhodes. Since this is going to be language in a comprehensive plan, it would give guidance going forward as to how we shape our zoning districts.
Right.
So we would probably continue on the discussion we had, similar to what we did tonight on PD2 and whether we should have higher density or smaller lot sizes in some of the other zoning districts that could support development in targeted growth areas.
So what this language is, is somewhat saying is it encourages considerations of things like PT&amp;Ds, like PD2s, like other ones that would be able to tap into those zoning capability for smaller lots?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or if there's an individual project that comes in that's adjacent to an apartment complex, that's in a suburban area, and there's a zoning district that would support the smaller lot sizes, then if that detail is, is proposed, and that would, this, this policy would support that.
Got you. Okay.
Any thoughts? I would guess, I think it probably should be a motion. I mean, to a certain degree, it's a, it's a major change in our thinking, our thinking for the county. So I, I guess we'll ask for a motion. But I know, for example, Mr. Appicello felt strongly on this. So I don't know if we want to wait till he comes back in. Is there any additional information people need on this issue to make some type of determination? Okay.
To me, it's consistent with the concept of trying to TGA target group them.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if it's, we can, or we can, we can hold it until Mr. Appicello comes back. And then, then we can take a vote on it. We'll just, it's okay if everyone, we just jump right back up to it. Okay. All right. So the next is the residential building types in suburban areas.
Yes, this was the issue that Jeff touched on just recently, briefly, just a moment ago, about suggesting adding some criteria in suburban land use district that might support townhomes and multifamily dwelling units. And this was discussed at the Board Retreat, and they were okay with it as long as the, the density of three dwelling units per acre is not exceeded. So we've provided in your package in Attachment Seven, language that already exists in the suburban land use district that talks about special conditions for townhomes and multifamily units. And we've added this, this language was added in under two previous amendments. One was first for the Witsen Woods Project and then for the Stafford Village Center Project, where criteria was added in, in special situations where the, a higher density was supported for, for those cases, because they were surrounded by higher-density development in that location. So we added in a third criteria that if those prior special situation issues on subsection A and B are not met, that other dwelling unit types would be allowed on a case-by-case basis, provided they don't, they're compatible with existing nearby development and don't exceed the three dwelling unit per acre density. So if you don't meet all these special criteria, you might be able to have the higher, the townhomes and apartments, but you gotta go at a lower density.
Okay. Is there any discussion or feeling about that? All right. So do we have a motion on that to include that in the comp plan? Okay. Mr. English made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Mr. Rhodes. Any conversation?
No, sir.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So now we move to adequate public facility policy.
Okay, there was the last Subcommittee meeting discussion about the newly adopted proffer legislation, which limits the ability to collect off-site proffers and concern about what effect that's going to have on the county if we're planning for all this growth. And so there was a desire to kind of get some language in to the, to the plan to ensure that development didn't occur until the facilities were, you know, and improvements were in place or, or planned to support the, the growth that's going to be occurring. So there is an existing policy in the, in the, in the comp plan that we've saw that somewhat related to, to this issue, and we worked to modify that. That's Policy 1.7.2, and I'll just read through it. It would be new development proposals for projects within the urban service area boundary and for the targeted growth areas. And any new development at an intensity above what is permitted by right that are dependent upon the future infrastructure and services should be rejected until the projected infrastructure and services have been implemented or appropriately scheduled. Scheduling of future improvements can be achieved through proffered contributions and/or improvements by the developer, scheduling improvements in the county's capital improvements program, or establishing other funding mechanisms, such as a community development authority or tax district. So this policy lays out alternatives that would allow development to occur if, if the needed improvements are appropriately planned for either through proffers, CIP, or special taxing district. And we'd recommend that this language also be added, not only in the policy section, but in the language within Chapter Three, under future land use as well. Because that was, Subcommittee said, you know, get this, you know, in the, in the plan and, and often.
Okay. Is there a motion that we've?
A comment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. I, I, I understand the concept, and, and I'm supportive of the concept. My concern is what, what is it? And this is only guide, it's comp plan, it's only a guide. But how, how do we interpret it? So I'll try and go to two extremes purposely. But if we say that it's dependent upon future infrastructure changes, so it could, is the intent here? Or is the thought there that everything will be at Level C? For road infrastructure is what I always think of for this. So is everything going to always be at Level C or better, no matter the time of day? Or if, if the growth of another 200 homes at a location is going to make an intersection go to F an hour a day, and when the flows are two hours a day, does that have to wait till that entire, you know, road is? I, I, there's a little bit of definitional concern, because it could be seen as a broad direction or a narrow direction. And that's just the, the one bit of, a little bit of discomfort I have with the, the language. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Druff, do you have anything to respond?
Well, the, the issue came up when we were talking about the, at the Subcommittee meeting, where we were looking at adding in the, the land along Ramaham Church Road. And, you know, the discussion was on transportation. And the condition of Ramaham Church Road in that area is, you know, very, you know, narrow, windy, two-lane road. And we're going to be adding this area into suburban to support higher-density development. But, you know, there, there would be a strong desire to really get, have Ramaham Church Road improved before a lot of development came, comes in that location. So that's kind of the, kind of the impetus, along with just the overall concern with the new proffer legislation. But that was one prime example of, of how the new proffer legislation might hamstring the county and keep the county from being able to get the necessary improvements in place.
And, and along those lines, again, the broader interpretation, then it could be 30 years till we get something around the church. So we, we just will plan to not have anything there, on, on the broader extent of it, but...
All right. Anything to add, Mr. Harvey or anybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So now, I guess, we'll ask, is there a motion to include such language into the comp plan? And seeing no one. Or is there a desire to think about it and come back in two weeks?
I, I, I think there is something about this that has strong merit. And I think, I think that's why it was suggested and reinforced throughout the process. I, I just think there's a little bit more scoping. And, and I'm trying to think of, of exactly where. But to me, maybe if we could work to, to scope it or more strongly to... if we could work to scope it or more strongly define what the intent behind it is, almost a little bit of definitional intent to the scope of where it would be applied. Again, it's still a guiding document. It's not directive or the ordinance. And if we could maybe have another stab at it for the next time we get together, that, that might be beneficial.
Okay. Is that the will? I see. Nodding heads, all right. So, that's for, to come back in two weeks. So, that brings us to goals, objectives, and policies.
So, last attachment you received, Attachment Eight, is the entirety of Chapter Two of the plan on the goals, objectives, and policies. We've made several modifications within that chapter, just to reference, you know, any, any references to urban development areas were amended to targeted growth areas. That was a change that we worked on last year. Added some new changes under Goal Three, under the environmental section, the sustainability section. It was modified to address the need to plan for sea level rise, which was a more recent amendment to the state code that we were required to, to address it in our comprehensive plan. And then, we've added in some reference to Wide Water State Park as well in the amendments. So, you have all those in front of you, and I'm not going to go through each one.
Right. And that one doesn't necessarily need any type of motion. That's just to give us an eye of what type of rewrite you have to do and why it will take you until, basically, the 27th of April to integrate. That's the only negative of trying to embed things into this. It means it's more work for Mr. Zureff to do to get it in throughout the document. So, then that brings us to last item, number 12, other amendments slash next steps. I'll let you bring up anything, and then I'll just summarize what I have as the next steps, and see if you're agreeable that we'll do it next, our next meeting.
We had the one item we were going to circle back on.
Yes. Thank you. We had the topic of the smaller lot sizes and whether or not to put that into the document. And I believe we were sort of waited for a motion to actually put it into the document. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to put that in the document, because again, it's, it's really just emphasizing consideration of those different tools that are available, but it still will be based on the underlying ordinances of the different zoning districts.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So, that's in there. All right. So, now we go to next steps. Go ahead, Mr. Zureff, and then I'll just sort of touch on what I have written down as the things that we need to do next for the next meeting, and then we'll be done on this item, and we can give it back to the chairman.
Yeah. Well, the big thing, we'll modify the targeted growth area numbers and provide some additional mapping for you to, you know, so we can get those, those areas defined. And I think, the big thing, though, you know, in the meantime, we'll also, we'll get the policy on adequate public facilities, get that language redefined and get that back. And any, any new amendments that we have available by the next meeting, we'll bring those. Otherwise, we'll be really shooting for getting all the details written up for the April 27th meeting of all the targeted growth areas. And I think probably good to, at the next meeting, also get you some more detailed language on the central Stafford planning area as well.
Right. And then, the only other thing that you didn't mention, and I'm not certain that we need the language by the next meeting, but the only other item that I have is about the 610 element and how that would fold into it. But quite honestly, if you think that that will just work into the regular document on the 27th, that probably could fit there. But just, that was the only other thing, other than what you mentioned, that we sort of need to address. Anything else from the Commission?
If I could beg the indulgence on two, two quick items. One is back to my belated, blurted-out no on the airport. I just wanted to clarify, I, I actually, I agree and support the concept. When we had an extended discussion in the ABC room on it, that one Saturday, I think everybody was, but we also talked about scaling it. And I just haven't seen any language that scales it. And the original verbiage, which I think is what we're still talking about, just had a lot of very broad applications. And so, I wanted to just share, so I was trying to think that through, and I was late to the game, but that's the no. It's nothing about the concept. But I do believe that the verbiage that came with the original proposal did have a very broad application of things. And if we're going to adopt that under there, it might merit rereading, just to make sure we're all comfortable with that. I would just share that for one point. Second point, if I had it to do over again, I'm too late to the game, but if I had it to go over again, my comments on the population growth projections would actually have been targeted this way. And that is since 1950, every 10-year, 10-year period that we've had of growth in this county has been between 40 and 65%. The average of all those 10-year periods has been almost 50%. And we're adopting a 20-year plan that's going to be at 40.8%. And from that perspective is what I've reinforced, we're adopting less than a 10-year model in any other period of time. And that, that was what my concern was about on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I turn it back to you, Mr. Appicella.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. New business? None. Planning Director's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report mainly focuses on the Commission's expenditures. We're well within current expenditures. I will note that there's a little over $5,000 in advertising funds left. The comprehensive plan, when it's advertised, will be fairly costly due to the maps that are required as well as the text. So, we still think we should be in budget, but I'd request permission from the Commission if it appears that we're going to be close to exceeding that line item, that staff have the ability to transfer funds from the printing and publishing line item over to advertising to cover any cost gaps.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or can we just do it back in census?
I think you have to make a motion on that.
Okay.
Any budget, budget transfers, is that correct? Is, like, a budget transfer type thing?
Correct. Our department would do a budget transfer between those two lines if necessary.
I'll make a motion, and he has the authority to do that.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion. It's been seconded to allow the Planning Director to move funds around as necessary for advertising purposes primarily. Any further comments, Mr. English?
No.
Mr. Rhodes, were you the second? Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Anything else, Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, the Board of Supervisors recently approved the oil farms applications on Route 17 for the proffer amendment, as well as the conditional use permit application. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. County Attorney's Report?
I have no report at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We've already gone through the comp plan subcommittee. Chairman's Report, I have nothing. Other business? I assume everyone's got their TRC information. Looks like mostly Aquai and Hartwood. Is that correct? Mr. English, you have yours?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Approval of minutes, March 9, 2016. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve, seconded to approve the minutes from March 9, 2016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Take a motion to adjourn?
Send move.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.